2019 City Council Meeting to Order. Welcome, everybody, in the council chambers and those who may be listening to us on the Oshkosh Cable Media Services radio station and television station. Would the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Muggerauer.
Here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Paschal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Mayor Pomp Mary. Present six.
Thank you. Those of you may notice that the mayor is not here tonight. Unfortunately, she had a family emergency that took her away from tonight's meeting, and she is in Milwaukee, and she'll be back probably sometime tonight or tomorrow. So with that, we all rise, and Councilmember Crowsey will lead us in the invocation, and the students will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay. Guys, come on back up here. You gotta be in front of the TV just like we are. So turn around. Place that camera right up there, okay? And I'm gonna ask you your name, the school you go to, and what is your favorite sports?
My name is Tyler. I go to Oakwood, and my favorite sport is soccer.
My name is Brady. I go to Oakwood. I'm in fifth grade, and my favorite sport is soccer.
So we have future USA soccer players with us tonight. All right. While we have a certificate of appreciation for helping us out tonight, so we'll give them to you, and then if you guys want to take off, you may do so. I got one. Hang on. The other one might be under there. Yes. See, I'm a rookie at this too at times. So here you go. Thanks a lot. Let's give them a round of applause. It's always nice to have the students leading us in the pledge. So, Mr. Roloff, we have an introduction of city staff. I think most of us, councilmembers, are familiar with them, but none of them, well, same?
Thank you to Deputy, thank you Deputy Mayor Herman. Yes, councilmembers have already met our new Finance Director, but when I introduced you to him at a previous meeting, he was our interim Finance Director. So Russ, if you can come on up, even dressed up for tonight, so I really appreciated that. Russ Van Gompoel is our new Director of Finance. Russ has been involved in local government for over thirty years. I've known Russ personally for over twenty-five years. He's, he was, when I first met him, he was with the Village of Little Shoot where he was the village administrator, but prior to that, he was their Finance Director and a Finance Director in Minnesota. From our time in Little Shoot, when I was in Grant Shoot, Russ moved on to Brown Deer where he was the village manager, and then he was the village manager, the city manager of Eau Claire. And Russ relocated this area a few years ago, and we were able to talk him out of retirement to join us, and we're happy to have him. He's tackling a lot of new things and appreciate having him on board.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thanks. Thank you. Go ahead. Anything further to add? But, you know, excited to be part of the team and look forward to helping the city of Oshkosh.
Thank you very much. Glad to have your experience.
Russ, I've already drafted you for our basketball team. You'll be playing on my city basketball team, so thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, I started early in life. I knew Mark when I was ten years old. That's why I've got all the super names.
You got all the height.
He was taller than me then, too.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. All right. Citizen's Statements to Councils Next to the Agenda. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh and the common council, may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Has anyone, anybody signed up?
No one's registered.
No one has signed up. That's pretty empty council chamber tonight, so they must have knew I was gonna be running the meeting. We have our, it's one of the councilmembers said our B Team is on board tonight. Welcome, Mr. Praska. Glad to see you.
Go B Team.
Okay. We'll move into Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are those of routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Is there anyone signed up for consent agenda items?
No one has signed up.
All right. I'll bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion from council? I see none, so will Deputy Clerk please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried six.
No items have been removed from the consent agenda. We'll move to pending ordinances. Ordinance number nineteen-five-one-zero. Modify parking regulations on Nap Street. Has anybody signed up to speak on that item?
No one has signed up.
I'll bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take the roll call, please.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance number nineteen-five-one-one. Approve ordinance permitting appointment of non-voting youth to city boards and commissions. Anybody sign up for that?
No one has signed up.
I'll bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll just mention, for those that maybe aren't aware out in the community, this is something that Mayor, prior Mayor Cummings wanted to bring forward, which was to have a youth advisory board, and Mayor Prime Maurer wanted to move it to appointments of non-voting youths, so we'll be reaching out to the school district and schools in the Oshkosh area for youth to get on there. So hopefully, they'll get engaged. We'd like to hear their opinion. Will the Deputy Clerk please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right. That takes us to ordinance nineteen-five-one-two. Approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district SMU to suburban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay, SMUPD, at 237 North Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Anybody sign up to speak on that?
No one's registered.
All right. I'll bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? No one's discussing, all right. Deputy Clerk, want to take the roll, please?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right. That takes us to new resolutions. Resolution nineteen-five-one-three. Approve amendment to 2019 CIP budget for Lake Shore Riverwalk projects, $150,000. Contract nineteen-ten. Anyone sign up for that one?
No one's signed up.
Okay. I'll bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Muggerauer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Herman. Maybe Mr. Roloff, and maybe Mr. Davis, too. Just a brief update for those at home and even those who are up here as well. We are making a budget amendment to add some funds in contingency for the Lake Shore Park development. I think just one question. It looks like we're taking this out of redevelopment, infrastructure improvement account, putting it into the TIF. Just want to confirm that, as well as what is also, if you have it, the remaining balance of the funds left over from Lake Shore's sale that could be used then for future park development? I know it's a long one, but...
I'll do, I'll do the last one first. There's a project, there's over $2 million left in the Lake Shore Fund for park development. Because the plan hasn't been finalized yet, we want to try to save that money once we know the whole scope of the work. We've been fortunate enough that the Oshkosh Avenue Corridor Project has been going very well. We've gotten very good bids on that. So we felt it was appropriate to, to move it over into that fund. As for the explanation of the whys behind it, I think it's appropriate that people become aware of it, and Mr. Davis can explain it to you, because he was the unfortunate soul that had to explain it to me.
As we started installing the Riverwalk, we had to scrape away the top soil, and as we were working on the parking lot and the driveway to the old parking lot, we were scraping away some of that existing asphalt, and we discovered a lot of material there from fill over the many, many years that was not appropriate for supporting the Riverwalk, and some of it turned out to be contaminated. So now we have a contaminated site that nobody was aware of until we actually started working on the site. So now we have to remove that contaminated soil, remove the bad soils, and long-term, the city will have to deal with DNR and what we do about the balance of the contaminated site.
And I would add that during the, all the archaeological work, investigations that were done on the site where Oshkosh Corporation is, we didn't find any of those things. So we're hoping that it's limited, but the reality is, is that the DNR wants to see more. That's beyond the scope of what we're doing here. This will take care of the trail, but Mr. Maurer, a part of the park has, has this issue, and we'll have to investigate it. And there's probably a blessing in disguise, because if there is any contamination, we want to make sure that it's not leaking into the, into Lake Buttermore in the Fox River. So we'll do the investigations. We'll be back. It won't be about this project, but certainly, I don't think that was the intent, going to Councilmember Muggerauer's question, I don't think the, the idea was take the proceeds and use it for that, but we're gonna have to figure out a way to, to address this issue. And unfortunately, we've come across these in the past, and we'll just, we'll have to address them.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Davis, did you have anything on his other part of the question?
Aye.
One was funding, and I think the other was...
Mark.
I took care of it.
City Manager Roloff, I think covered the balance of it.
Councilmember Miller.
Alan, do you expect, and I know this is a tough question, I'm sorry to throw you under the bus, I mean, do we expect to run into more of this as we continue that, that portion of the build?
From, we've excavated everything from I-41 over to Pinocqua, so we shouldn't have to excavate anymore. I am a little concerned that as we go farther to the east through Rainbow Park, there might be something else that we'll discover there, because that could be filled, or there could be other things there. So until we go through that process, it's still an unknown.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from councilmembers? Deputy Clerk, take the roll call, please, on resolution five, nineteen-five-one-three.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution nineteen-five-one-four. Grant noise variance request, Kelly's Bar, 219 Wisconsin Street, for amplified music until midnight at Beer Garden, September thirteenth and fourteenth, 2019. Anyone sign up for that one?
No one has signed up.
All right. Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, Deputy Clerk, take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution nineteen-five-one-five. Approve appointments to ad hoc special assessment committee. Anyone sign up for that?
No one's signed up.
All right. I'll bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Not much of a discussion, just wanted to thank, I know she's not here this evening, but thank the mayor for putting together this list, cutting it down a little bit. I think it does represent a decent snapshot of our community. Plenty of willing volunteers, that was nice to see. Always would like to see more, as with any of our boards and commissions, but still to have quite a list to choose from. But I think this represents a decent snapshot of people who are willing to, to come in and keep an open mind and try to make some suggestions to us as to how do we move forward, if we can, on, on a suggestion to replace special assessments here in the city of Oshkosh. So I thank them for volunteering and the mayor for putting it together for us to review tonight.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mark, I guess this is for you, there was some talk that maybe, there's some rumors that they're gonna be expanding that tourism zone tax commu, what is it?
No, the...
Entertainment? Entertainment resort.
Resort tax.
Yeah.
Premier resort.
Here comes the expert.
Yeah. It's interesting, because there was something that was put out, that the premier resort tax is something that requires special state legislation, and Mr. Van Gompoel pointed out to me that there were some communities that somebody in the legislature bringing forward three communities.
Yeah.
We're not one of them, but the question is, is, you know, do we want to be considered on that list? And that, and first thing, Russ said, "Well, what do you think about us?" So Russ, I'm not sure if you've done any digging on this.
Yeah, there's basically proposed legislation that would add two new communities, again, not the city of Oshkosh, and the two escape me right now. But one of the questions is, is Oshkosh maybe a candidate to be a third community, and we would need to work with our local legislatures to bring that forward, but it does require special legislation in order to become part of this area-wide sales tax district called a resort fee or a resort district. So it, it requires a separate piece of legislation.
Mark, can I have you put this on our agenda for the next time, too, so it just kind of stays there as a bookmark?
I'll put it under there when we get down to a...
Perfect.
Very shortly, under future agenda item.
Thanks.
Okay.
And Russ, thanks for bailing me out, and Mark.
No problem.
All right. Any further discussion on Resolution nineteen-five-one-five, approve appointments ad hoc special assessment committee? Deputy Clerk, you want to take the roll call, please?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried six.
Now, you have one question for the city manager, now that the ad hoc committee is approved, when do you anticipate they'll meet, or try to meet?
We'll be contacting all the members tomorrow and pretty much putting out some type of doodle poll or something to, to see what time would be good to get them together. They all understood when they signed on that this was going to be a, you know, a very short timeframe, so we'll be doing that pronto tomorrow. The other thing, I was asked a question, there are a number of members of this committee who are also members of the Long Range Finance Committee. In fact, one of the members was just appointed on the consent agenda today. We will jointly notice this, just to make sure that we're covered on that regard, because technically, you could even have a quorum of the Long Range Finance Committee during the course of this. But the Long Range Finance Committee had a great deal of knowledge that they can bring to that, so that's not necessarily a disadvantage, it's just that we'll have to notice it as a joint meeting of this ad hoc committee and Long Range Finance.
Okay. Very good. Other questions? Okay. We'll move to Resolution nineteen-five-one-six. Support legislation action at the state and federal level to address incidents of mass violence and gun safety legislation. Anyone sign up to speak on that?
No one's signed up.
All right. Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm not gonna make the motion at the moment, but I don't know if, should we potentially table this until the mayor is able to return and so she can be a part of this? This was something she initiated, and I assume it's something close to her and that she'd like to definitely convey her thoughts. It may sound bad, and I hope it doesn't, but a two-week delay on approving this, the impact of that won't be too much, hopefully, but I think it may be appropriate to do so.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Allison Osby.
I completely agree with Councilmember Muggerauer. I do think the person that initially brought it forward should be in, in the presence before a vote.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to table until the next council meeting.
Second.
Is there a second?
I would suggest that the council carry it over. Tabling has a more...
Oh, sure.
That, yeah.
Move, make a motion, carry over.
Then we can absolutely put it back on the next agenda if it's a carry.
Thank you.
Everybody okay with that? You're in it over? All right. I guess we'll, is, bring it back to the public, is there anybody that wants to speak on carrying over Resolution nineteen-five-one-six, support legislative action at the state and federal level to address incidents of mass violence and gun safety legislation? We're tabling it mainly at the, or laying it over. The mayor initiated this, and where she could not be with us tonight, we'll hold it over next council meeting. We'll take a vote first on the amendment to the resolution. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll call.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried six.
Okay. Now, bring it back for a vote to approve the amendment to lay over until the next council meeting, Resolution nineteen-five-one-six. Anybody wish to speak on that?
I think you're good.
We're good.
You laid it over, you're good.
Okay.
Okay.
Didn't have to re-vote on a second one. Okay.
You're working too hard.
I am. We're done with resolutions, we'll go to council discussion, direction of city manager, and future agenda items. The first one is Oshkosh Area School District and Common Council Meeting, October fifteenth at 6:00 PM, Room 404.
It'll be right here, right here. We're, we're the host for this meeting.
We're the host. Okay. Second one is Fire Staffing Study Workshop, September twenty-fourth at 5:00 PM. Everybody have that on their books to make that? That's one of the goals, I guess we put out there with the city manager, working on. All right. Anybody have any comments? Okay. Move on to C, Council Discussion Regulation, Regulation of Conversion Therapy, September twenty-fourth. Councilmember Paschal.
Sure. I don't know that I have that much to talk about this, because it looks like we've put a date to discuss it.
That was, that was the idea, I think, after your request.
So I don't, I don't have anything to, to share to that. We can, I'll bring anything that I may have as a, as a council member in preparation for that, for that discussion, so...
Okay. Anybody else? Comments? No? All right. We'll move to D, the Third Budget Workshop, September eighteenth at 5:00 PM, Room 404. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Herman. Just a reminder, again, to my fellow councilmembers and also to staff, that I am at a, a work conference out of state that day, moving forward the rest of the week.
Okay. We'll put a big check mark by your name, absent. Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you. Actually, I will, also gotta give a heads up that I will not be able to attend that meeting. I had something that was, should have been on my calendar, but it wasn't, and I was informed that it was on my calendar. And so I will be missing the, that meeting, but as always, our friends at Oshkosh Media will keep me informed, and I will be able to watch that, that evening or, or the next day very easily.
All right. Mr. Roloff, what are we gonna be covering at that workshop? Just so...
The Third Budget Workshop is primarily associated with capital improvements, not specific projects, but more the funding of capital projects. Debt management is, is a big issue. We'll be talking about that. I think, I think both Russ and, and is, and some of the Long Range Finance Committee have been talking about debt management policy and how that might work out, so we'll be talk about that a little bit.
Are you anticipating that policy being kind of like a draft run up at that meeting?
No, not at that meeting, just more of a general...
Won't be ready yet?
More of a general why we're going towards that. I think long-term, we think it'll be an effective way to deal with Moody's and things like that. And then by the end of the week, if you haven't gotten in your inbox already, the capital improvement plan, proposed capital improvement plan is out. It'll be on the next Plan Commission agenda, so council should be getting a copy of it. It's about, oh, about three-quarters of an inch thick, so healthy reading, but there's summary pages there for you.
Okay. Very good. And yes, with our opportunities to get the workshops, and obviously, councilmembers know they can reach out to staff at any time during the budget cycle if they have questions or concerns, so... All right. We'll move to number twenty-one. It's bus fare for youth passengers. Councilmember Paschal.
Sure. So I don't want to get into a laborious conversation about it, I just want to put it out that I'm, been working with Jim Collins to bring up some numbers of what it would take to create a student fair. So there's, a lot of the systems across the state have created a student fair. They range in fares, all the way from, I think it's fifty cents all the way up to a dollar twenty-five, or in our case, a dollar fifty, because that's our regular fare. So, and in doing that, I wanted to provide Mr. Collins the opportunity to discuss that and then, and see if there's any direction that if the council was interested in going in this direction of what level of preparation they would like staff to go in, so... So, Mr. Collins, do you want to just kind of come in and talk about the, the student fares from, from your perspective and from the staff's perspective?
Sure.
Sure. I mean, I, from, from my perspective, um, and basically what, uh, what we've talked about in the past was there's the idea of public school students being able to use public transit, um, for no cost. And most, most cities that have that, the school district has a revenue agreement, um, with the city where they make the transit system whole. Now, I know that S, there's a group called Esther and some others that would like to see, um, that be funded somehow. I don't know how that's gonna be, would be funded, but in lieu of that, I know Mr. Peschel's asked about a student fare. Um, so, basically, we're still talking about, say, fifty thousand dollars that we get in revenue from student fares, and then we get about nineteen thousand dollars that the district purchases passes, um, with. However, I did ask the district for an updated number. I'm not sure if it's still nineteen thousand, but that's what it was last time. I knew what it was. So it's fifteen, nineteen, we're at sixty-nine thousand, right? That has to be funded somehow. Um, so, one of the ideas is a reduced fare. If we do some type of reduced fare, um, then the simplest way to think about it is what percentage we discount that, and then that's the amount of revenue that'll need to be made up somewhere.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Crowsey.
So, the question I have, the fifty thousand dollars, that's the revenue average that we've gotten over the last couple of years from the student purchase passes? And that fifty thousand, does that include what the school system has been paying, or the school? Because the school's been buying passes, right?
Yep. So fifty thousand's what we get from cash fare and monthly passes, basically it's cash from users. The nineteen thousand's what the school district has purchased from us in passes and tokens and fare that they give out to students in need.
So, the last couple of years, the school's been chipping in about twenty thousand?
Yes.
And if we do like a reduced fare for students, that could be part of the whole equation for the whole bus system, for the reduced, or free busing for kids. Like, that would be their equity in it. If the city would have equity, school system, and then the parents, potentially, that's an idea.
Yeah. For example, if we give, if we add a twenty-five percent, uh, reduction in fares, then the school district would only be paying fifteen thousand because they would be eligible for that discount because they're purchasing on behalf of children. So, we would have to make up five thousand of that, and then using the same logic with the fifty thousand we currently charge for, at the fare box, uh, about twelve thousand five hundred. So, twenty-five percent reduction, for example, would result in about, uh, seventeen thousand five hundred.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Jim, I'm gonna throw you under the bus a little bit here, and I'm sorry. I know you probably don't have these numbers. Um, if they're, if they're paying cash, how do we know it's a student, I guess? How, how are you coming up with that, that fifty thousand? And if you don't know, I get it. I get it. So.
They're basically, the only, we don't track student fares, so the way that we can determine that is we take the revenue on a day where we know that we don't have school versus re, revenue when school's in session. So that's how we did the analysis. And, um, it's probable that that difference is students.
Okay. And, and just to be all-encompassing in this, in this conversation, do we, do we give any type of discounts for, for bulk passes or to nonprofits or, and I apologize, I, I don't know your, your end of the business very much, so.
Sure. No, we, we don't currently. So we have, basically, the only reduced fares we have are for elderly, um, and disabled, are eligible for half fare. So, whereas it's a dollar fifty, normally they would get, they can get seventy-five cents if they're over sixty, um, or they have a Medicare card or they're on disability.
Okay. All right. How, how do our, how do our, how do our fares stack against our, our sister cities, Fond du Lac, Appleton, Mina?
Uh, we're the second lowest that I'm aware of in the state. The only one that's lower is Stevens Point. It's still at a dollar.
In the whole state, we're the second lowest?
Yes.
Second lowest.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Peschel.
Sure. Um, one of the reasons why, so, Mr. Collins alluded to the conversation kinda shifting over the last year or so. Um, the reason why I've moved towards a fee is that I, I believe that it provides us the opportunity to create data other than making a calculation of, of what you suggested, which isn't a bad, uh, assumption to make either. So, um, but I, I think from the perspective of the city and the perspective of the school district, uh, by creating a fare, we get to see who and what ages, uh, they're, you know, they're, they're utilizing these fares a lot more. It gives us a data point, which I think is really important and something we really didn't truly have before the conversation about, about creating a rate. So, that was my only comment.
Okay. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. Um, so I sit on the Transit Advisory Board, and Mr. Collins and I have, you know, had multiple conversations over, um, even before I was, um, took over the board last year. So I think, you know, one of the things is when we talk about, like, either discounted fares or, you know, something of that nature for the students, you know, obviously, um, I think that's admirable. But one of the things that I think that we all have to know going into that conversation is that, you know, there are municipalities that, you know, may have discounted or even, you know, no charge to the fare. Um, but in those instances, the school district does cover it. So, there's kind of, I think, this misnomer that the municipality or the city out of their budget covers that, when indeed the school district is the one that's covering that. So, I just wanna make sure that everybody's aware of that, um, and we're all on the same page as, you know, perhaps this discussion may move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowsey.
Uh, one last question, comment. Um, the fifty thousand dollar figure that you stated, um, the year, the couple of years I've been in council, like, that number's been floated a couple of times, and it's the first time Mr. Miller brought up, how was that figured out? So I don't know why that question hasn't came up before. But the, the fees, the, the bus pass fees, potentially that fifty thousand might be at the high end, in my opinion, because a lot of times these kids that go on these buses, they might be young, they might have their parent with them, so they're, they're, they're paying a fee too. So just to replace the kids portions of it that would be riding, might not be, if it's one in ten kids ride with their parents to school, that would take five thousand off that. And, um, touch on Ms. Allison Osby's point, um, I wouldn't support a completely city-funded, um, bus free pass. I think the, the school's been paying twenty thousand a year, and that could be their portion. Uh, reduced fare for the kids could be their portion, and the city can come up with their portion too, whatever percentage it would be. I would be in support of that.
Yeah, that, the fifty thousand dollar, I actually just looked at it again for this year because our fares went up January first. Um, so that's, our ridership was down a little bit. That's why the number's still pretty good, um, in my opinion. Um, however, you could be right. However, I really haven't seen many parents that ride with their student. The majority of the students that take transit, um, are middle school and high school, really. Um, so most of them are riding alone, but, um, in, in my opinion, that's still a decent number.
Okay. Councilmember Peschel.
Sure. So, um, um, uh, Councilmember Allison Osby. So, um, I, I guess my, I'm, that's, that's under the, I think that's under, your, your comments are built under the idea that there would be some type of revenue agreement between those, between the district and the city?
No, I'm just saying, like, in the cities, not us, but the others that are providing either discounted or, you know, no-charge transportation, a hundred percent of that cost is coming out of the school budget, from what Mr. Collins and I understand.
Yeah. Basically, they have revenue agreements. So the most, the two most recent examples are, um, Sheboygan and Green Bay. And I've had some conversations with their transit directors, and both of them, the school district was interested in doing this, basically what you're talking about. So they came to them and said, how much would we need to contribute to transit in order to make this happen? So, in both cases, Green Bay and Sheboygan was modeled after Green Bay, um, told them, you know, I don't know what their number is, but gave them the number, like I'm saying, the sixty-nine thousand dollars. And then the school district agreed to pay that amount of money to allow their students to ride for no charge. So, so that's how most cities have done it. Um, like Mr. Peschel said, there are some cities that have youth fare as well. Um, so I think, you know, we've talked over the years, um, not as much about youth fare, but the discussion over the years has been about no charge for students and just the districts that do have that program, it is funded by the school district.
Go ahead, son.
Um, if, if I recall correctly, Sheboygan, uh, still has a student rate, if I, if I recall correctly. So, which.
I don't know if that's true or not off the top of my head. I know they have a revenue agreement that they just, uh, put in place probably within the last two years, I wanna say.
Yeah. So, I, I guess I'd, I'd have to go back and look at that information. I'm not, I, I, I agree with you, Sheboygan is, is the newest one, but I still remember there being a student rate related to that, and that, I think it was, no, this is what it was, is that during the school year, they rode free, and then during the summer, they, there was a student rate that was put into place for, for kids to ride at a discounted rate in the summer. So, I think that's how that works, so I'm not disagreeing with you in any way. Um, but I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to create, I'm trying to create a new fare. That's what I'm trying to do here. That's what my suggestion is. Um, and, and I wanna work through the logistics of, of doing that versus having this conversation built around, how do we make it free for everyone, which could be a long-term goal, which is part of, still part of that conversation that is going on in the community of, of providing, uh, transit rides. So there are still entities that are still part of the conversation that are interested in furthering, uh, students riding public transportation for school. So, um, but thank you for the conversation.
Councilmember Miller.
Uh, my partner in crime next to me always likes to throw free out, but we all know I'm not, I'm not for free, but I, I agree with him that I, I think there's some opportunities to do here something, um, for our at-risk and our underprivileged kids. And, and, yeah, not just us. I know, I know there's some interest, Jim, from the, from the private sector in, in potting in on this, and I know, probably makes you nervous, just like it does me on the Parks Board, when somebody says, hey, we're gonna come in and do this, and then two years they disappear, and then you're stuck holding the bag. But, um, there, there is a lot. I've been contacted, um, um, by some people that, that have interest in this as well. Um, and I just wanna remind everybody, when we, when we do this, talking with the nonprofits, um, they, they don't wanna see a seasonal fare because these, these kids have to get to these nonprofit centers in the summertime, sometimes to get a meal or something too. So, I, I guess I would be opposed to anything on, on just a seasonal basis. These kids need to get to these services year-round. So, um, and I, I, I just wanna make this a collective thing. Um, I, I don't want anybody to panic, but I, I do think there's some options out there, um, that are not free, Bob, but, um, but I, I, I think there's a good opportunity here to do something, and it can be a win-win for everybody. So, thank you.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. Um, to Mr. Miller's point, I think we've certainly seen in the past the real benefits of a public-private relationship. Um, and I think, you know, perhaps there is the opportunity for that here. I just want to make sure that everybody understands. I mean, this is, you know, my, my ninth budget cycle, and one of the biggest factors, I think, that's gonna come into play is we need to wait to see, you know, what's gonna be coming in, um, you know, from outside sources, because obviously transit is not fully funded by property taxes. So, we really don't know quite yet. Um, I can tell you, I've not yet seen, seen a year where we've had an increase in funds that have come in to support this. It's always been a decrease. Um, Mr. Collins, can you tell me, like, when do those numbers typically come in so that we know what we're operating with?
Um, you mean as far as the level we're funded at from the federal and state level?
Yes.
Um, it gen, since I've been here, which is, this is my sixth budget, it goes down about a half percent a year. Um, so we're at, I mean, they're estimating fifty-three and a half right now. Um, and what happens every year is basically, um, everybody's expen, so all the transit systems expenses go up, even though this year, I think there's like a two percent increase in the state aid to transit. However, that gets more than eaten up by the expenses, because as you know, most expenses go up more than two percent a year. Um, so what that does is it reduces the percentage that they, they'll allow to each system. Um, because what they do is they put all that money in a pot, and then they make equal all the transit systems that are, there's three levels. We're in Tier B, which is small urban. And so each system in that category gets the same percentage of funding. So we take all our expenses, and then we can get, say, fifty-three and a half. That's a combination of the federal and state aid. Um, and then after that, we subtract our revenue, and what's left is the local levy. Um, so, whatever funding level we agree to, um, does increase the local levy.
Right. So, so we have that to talk about, and then we need to also talk about, you know, it's also, you know, we have wages and benefits and those types of things that go up as well. So, you know, when we get into the budget and we actually see some real numbers, I think we'll be able to evaluate a little bit better. But if we're thinking about a public-private relationship, as we've done with, you know, challenges in the community before, in which the city has agreed to participate at some level, you know, with our budget, you know, how they're gonna best, I think, absorb that information is, then what is it? You know, is there a particular age? Is it specifically to attend school and school activities? Is it to attend work? So I think this has to be, I just, what I don't wanna see is I don't wanna be taking from one budget of one institution and offsetting a budget of a different institution, because I think that crosses a line. But to what Mr. Peschel is saying, you know, it is an admirable thing to wanna be able to give perhaps a discounted fare or something like that, but we've got a great community, and I'd maybe like to explore more of the public-private relationship and what that looks like. But then actual, after we have some actual numbers that we know are concrete from our budget cycle.
Okay. Mr. Peschel, again.
Sure. Um, Mr. Collins, so just, we received, uh, an, an email, I think it was yesterday, from, uh, Mrs. Moran, the city manager's assistant, about, uh, transfer, uh, transportation grants. It was from the municipal, the League of Municipalities. Is there anything within that grant that may be beneficial to, uh, either this conversation or, uh, enhancing the, the ridership of the, of the, of the transit system?
Judge, I believe the grant you're talking about is, is that the transportation grant that is available to towns, cities, counties?
Yeah.
Generally, those are for capital items, so we could use those for, like, purchasing a bus. They're not used for, to offset, um, fares or operations, operating expenses. I haven't seen, other than our general grant, any that do that yet.
According to the, um, guidelines that, uh, were distributed, uh, by the, uh, Wisconsin Department of Transportation, MLS is the Multimodal Local Supplement Guidelines, uh, New Projects Statewide Related to Roads, Bridges, Transit Vehicle Purchase and Facility Projects, Bicycle and Pedestrian Accommodations, Railroads and Harbors. So, it wouldn't specifically cover operating costs for transit, but it would cover transit vehicle purchase. And that's certainly one that we have on the list, although we're, we're catching up with our, with our vehicle purchase.
Sure. So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stray a little bit, but it's still related to students and transportation. So, um, we'll give you a little bit. Thank you. So, uh, so one of the issues on the school district side is that there's some congestion at certain times of the day for student, student bus transportation, mainly at the high schools. Um, and so we find that there's congestion specifically at those times. Uh, could a grant like this be used to address what, I think what we would refer to as the trippers, uh, in regards to, uh, reducing congestion at that time by purchasing another vehicle that, another bus that may be able to, uh, uh, take care of that issue?
Well, I don't think it's an issue. We have plenty, we have enough buses with fares that, I don't think that's the issue. It'd be more the operating cost associated with that.
Yeah. Okay. So it's more of the labor, the labor side of things and, and having that to be able to operate another bus, to be able to, to, to reduce that congestion.
Our fleet has enough in reserves that we could handle it, we could handle from an equipment standpoint, we could handle the trippers. It's the operating cost that would be associated with that.
And a good example of that is, Appleton has trippers, but the school district funds the operation.
Okay.
So, and I think, to your point, and I think that's where I'm coming at, is, um, you were chairing a committee with your school board hat, and is this recommendation of funding or student pass rate, is that a recommendation from your school board side of the hat, or is this from your city side of the hat?
Um, I would say in my conversations with, uh, community members about this issue, um, that, um, that this was considered a common ground solution, uh, for, for this.
Okay.
So, because we've, we have gone over and over about, uh, fully funding, uh, free bus rides, and that has not been successful for us.
All right. Uh, Mr. Miller.
Jim, I promise it's the last question from me tonight. I don't know about the others, but, and again, I'm, I, I don't fault you if you don't know this. Um, percentage of ridership, is it going up? Is it going down? Just go back five years. I mean, what, are we seeing an increase, a decrease? Is it flat?
Um, it's actually, it's, the last year or two, it's decreased. Um, now, we had a fare increase on January first. So generally, when you have a fare increase, ridership decreases in the short term, um, then rebalances in the long term. However, um, currently, with the economy being pretty good, gas prices are pretty low, um, that generally is not a good mixture for increasing transit ridership. Um, and also, there's more alternatives now with the Ubers and the Lifts. So, I always, I, I like to think of it as we have three types of riders. We have transit-dependent that need it because they don't have a choice. We have students that, it kinda depends on their parents' availability, so that's, it's somewhat variable, but a lot of students do need to use the transit system. Um, and then we have discretionary users. When the economy's good, um, fuel's low, employment's good, generally, the discretionary riders are less. So.
So, so you think it's basically the economy is, is?
Yeah.
Okay.
That plus maybe a little bit of the fare increase.
Okay. Well, we're still the, the second lowest in the state, so I, I wouldn't think that would play a part of it. But, thank you very much, and I'm sorry I asked some questions I didn't prep before.
No, and, go ahead. I'd say from a transit side, you know, we'll, we'll support whatever, um, the solution is. However, it's just, we gotta find funding for whatever that is.
Councilmember Mugerhour.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, actually, and to Transportation Director Collins' point, I know when we had a conversation, um, I think earlier this year, a couple of them maybe, that was just one thing that we could both agree on, that we need to find a funding source. That no matter what, transportation would support, uh, in the end what council's decision is, as well as staff supports it. Um, but it's just, we, we've gotta find that offsetting revenue source, because, uh, you know, where's it coming from? Whether it's the tax levy, whether it's private partnerships, um, we've gotta find it from somewhere, because it doesn't just magically erase, uh, because we want it to. I did, uh, I just had one question, actually, and Councilmember Herman kinda, kinda said something to fellow Councilmember Peschel and, um, regarding the, the previous community group that had met. And just one question, only for, for Councilmember Peschel, is when is the last time that that community group came together and met?
It's been over a year.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Roloff.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Herman. Uh, the, uh, the issue about financing isn't as much about the impact on the levy, because that's council's discretion. Uh, you have to answer that, answer the, um, public on that. It's really more about the expenditure restraint, because our levy support for transit is directly, uh, tied in with our expenditure rest, or, um, our expenditure restraint formula. That's the thing that scares us. To the degree we can get some additional, uh, support, uh, to cover those things, either through the schools or private, that wouldn't impact us at all, and that would, that would be okay. It's just that if we have to put more general tax dollars, it's the double whammy of the tax, as well as the expenditure restraint. And Jim and I just met yesterday with his budget, um, and that's, it's not our singular focus, but it is certainly our primary focus when we're looking at that. What can we do to keep the levy, uh, reliance that they have? So we discussed, I mean, all these discussions Jim just had with you, it's because I was, I was grilling him yesterday, so he had those, he knows those answers, and it's, he knows that after, after doing this for over five years now, we know that we need to find revenues to cover ourselves. And I think they're doing a lot of great entrepreneurial things with bus wraps and the advertisement that we do, but, uh, the economy being good, I've seen this cycle over the years, when the economy is good, transit is, uh, transit ridership goes down. It's not, I don't view it being specifically about our fare increase, uh, which is a pretty modest fare increase over, over fifty cents over ten years is a pretty minor increase. But if people don't, that third category, the people who choose to ride the bus as opposed to transit-dependent and students, they're the ones who, who make that levy, uh, support go up, because we gotta make it up because we don't get it at the fare box.
Okay. Um, to wrap this up as, uh, council discussion to the city manager in future, um, from what I'm hearing in the conversation, do we wanna have Mr. Collins work with Mr. Pesch, Councilmember Peschel and staff on possibly student fees of some sort?
Student fare.
Student fare on the buses? And do we wanna continue this conversation into the budget cycle, not put it on our council agenda at this time? Councilmember Allison Osby.
So, yes. But, um, I just wanna be, um, extremely careful, because, you know, I think we all, um, you know, learned a lesson from communication regarding, you know, the tough and the high expectation.
expectations that obviously didn't come to fruition when it came to having assessments, you know, that were covered. So I just want to be careful when we start to talk about this, because obviously, you know, we are trying to help, you know, a section, you know, of our population in which may have some, so I don't want to create any false expectations. If for some reason it doesn't come through, again, you know, I have a lot of confidence in our community as well as us to try to figure something out, but let's just make sure that however we communicate this, that we're extremely, extremely careful with how this is portrayed to the public.
To that point, I guess we have that school board district meeting with them and the council on the 15th. We want that as an agenda item to have that discussion, and then after that discussion, we can make a decision to whether we want to bring it more back this way.
Sure.
We'll be farther into the budget, we'll have had the September 18th budget meeting and that, and I'm sure our new finance director, Mr. Collins, can sit down and crunch some numbers and things and see where we're at. So we have some opportunities to further the discussion. So, Mr. Roloff, is that, and Mr. Collins, good enough direction from council, or are you looking for anything more?
The only other thing I would add is, do you want, how do you want the Transit Advisory Committee to weigh in on this?
Well, I think they should look, I would, if Councilmember Allison Osby, if she
Run it past him.
Would want it on their agenda, she could bring that forward, I guess.
My, my intention was never to usurp that committee, but was to begin the conversation in the direction from this point, so.
Absolutely.
Any other councilmembers, comments, things? All right, thank you, it was a very good conversation. All right, that takes us off of that to the second citizen statements to council. Is anybody registered?
No one's registered.
Okay, brings us to city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. A couple of things in your agenda packet. We talked a little bit about the status of outstanding issues. We got the fire staffing study on the next council agenda. Happy to answer any questions you might have about the status report. With respect to Oshcorp, we kind of talked about that a little bit with the, the discovery of the contamination there. That's going to be, come back to council at a certain point. The other thing in terms of the contingency, we finally started to hear back from Winnebago County, because the connection from the trail to the, the Heritage Trail across Lake Butemore, they're starting to weigh in on things that they would like to see. They hadn't previously done that, so before we connect it, we gotta, we gotta make sure we're, we're okay with them. So you'll be hearing more about that, but we were kind of planning that with the contingency amount that you approved tonight. Tyler Technologies, we've extended our annual maintenance for commercial assessment services. This is where they do the, the property assessments for commercial properties. That's much less than what it was a few years ago, because our, we've taken some of this in-house, but they're still doing the commercial assessments. AECOM, we have a professional services agreement with them. This has to do with the 700 block of South Main, including 43 East 7th, getting all that demoed and, and getting that block prepped for future marketing and future development. The Lake Shore Park Master Plan Schedule, because the Parks Board pretty much took, they had three versions to look from, and it sounds like they liked a little bit of all three, so they wanted the Smith Group to take a little more time to make sure they incorporated all the features from the different plans. So the Parks Board did not discuss it at this month's meeting. They'll discuss it at their next monthly meeting. So that means that the Plan Commission won't get it until late October, and the council likely won't get it until early November. Sounds like.
Councilmember Miller, you have a comment?
I, I'm okay with slowing that process down. I think we're getting a lot of good feedback, and, and I, I think that's a great thing, that we're going to give them some more time to add some more things and some more time to give input, so I'm 100% okay with that.
And then the last thing I have, you know, I put it under tracking of water usage because of the, the meeting that was requested, that was held last evening. The, by my count, we had about 34 residents, citizens, attend the meeting. We covered a variety of things. We covered trying to get people to understand the utility bill a little bit more, so Ken Gabrielson of our staff went through the utility bill, broke it down so people understood the components of it, including things like fixed costs versus variable costs. If you had absolutely no water usage, there would still be a bill because of meter charges and things like that. We talked about reviewing water usage first before you look at the bill, so you can do an apples-to-apples comparison. Did I use more water than the previous month? Because we have had, we had all three utilities that are subject to the utility bill, all three of those experienced an increase in the past year. So the average was still, you know, it was under 10%, but all three together, you know, they were, they were sizable increases, so that could have a factor in your bill, and that was one thing we wanted to point out. We discussed why the switch over to the monthly billing cycle, explaining why we heard from many residents over the years, as well as landlords, that they wanted to have an easier way to keep track of it more frequently. Not everybody understood that, not everybody agreed with it. But I've heard pros and cons of going over, switching over to monthly billing, and ultimately we decided to do it because we felt that's what the customers were leaning towards. We also talked about water usage and common causes of leaks and examples of that. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later on, because we put a big emphasis on that, and in retrospect, I don't know if we needed to, but I'll explain that a little later. And then we talked about future steps. Software analytics that we're looking at to acquire, as well as one they're going to be, we're going to be proposing to the council, an app for your phone that will enable us to notify customers, they can sign up and they can get notified if there's a usage issue. And it seems to be very well received in the communities that we've checked with, so we'll be bringing that forward. So that was generally the topics that were discovered, discussed. There were some general questions, a lot of people were getting into specific issues, and we had an opportunity for people to talk about their individual bills after the meeting. I wish we'd had some of that wisdom during the discussion, because once we got into individual bills, we, we learned a little bit more. But there were some questions, and some that we hadn't considered before. There was a question about, would we consider budget billing, or can we offer it? Mr. Van Gampel's doing some investigation to see if that's something we can do. That's, you know, I certainly, I get it on my heating and gas bill, and I, I love it, and if we could offer that, we can certainly take a look at that. There were questions from the residents that, you know, there, a lot of us seem to be using too much water from what you're saying, meaning the city. But the people were invited on social media about, you know, if you've gotten a high water bill, come to the meeting, assuming that everybody had a high usage issue. From our one-to-one meetings, I think we, we found that not to necessarily be the case. And again, I'll talk about that in a minute. Then we clarified the issues that anything from inside the water meter into the house, that's the property owner's responsibility. If you have any type of leak, that's your responsibility. If there's a problem with the meter, that's our issue. If there's a problem with the software, that's our issue. We haven't found anything, we continue to consider that as a possibility, but we have not found any of those. Then we got to the one-on-ones, and then by that time, the media was leaving, they got a few comments from folks, but that was probably the most eye-opening part of the evening. And Mr. Van Gampel and his staff were there, Public Works staff was there, and based on the one-on-one meetings, we probably overemphasized the issue of over-usage. We were told that people were saying they were getting charged too much based on usage. There were very few issues with usage. There were several discussions that came up, some of which were a misunderstanding of the transition bill, and we own that. A lot of people didn't realize that, that, there was a transition bill sent out between the switch from quarterly to monthly. That transition bill could be anywhere from a month to two and a half months. So if you were expecting a monthly bill, there was a comment somebody made yesterday, it was really eye-opening for me. The person said, "I got my first monthly bill, and it was almost as expensive as the quarterly bill." That was someone who got a two-and-a-half-month bill. So they were absolutely correct. It was, it had nothing to do with over-usage, so we probably overplayed that issue, not understanding until we listened to them one-on-one, that that transition, I think, was misunderstood. And again, we own that, and we, we didn't do an effective enough job of explaining that that was the case. That confusion existed with several customers we talked to. Some folks, quite honestly, had unpaid balances, and they were attributing that to a monthly bill, but if they didn't pay in time and the bill got sent out, they were getting charged for last month's bill as well as the current month's bill. Russ and his staff talked a little bit more today, kind of doing a post-event breakdown, and I, I think I'd like to ask Russ to maybe share a little bit of what, what he learned from his staff.
Thanks. Just a couple of quick comments. I think for city councils, understanding and those watching and listening, you know, and we tried to emphasize this point, is our utility meter reading program has not changed. That program's still in play. And so what we do is, we, we want to listen to folks and listen to what their issues are, and, and take that into consideration. The hard part is, there's, you know, there's, just like anything else, there's no two things that are exactly the same, whether, you know, it's a leaky situation or a faulty plumbing fixture, whatever the case may be. So, you know, it was very helpful to have the one-on-one. The important thing to know is, even when we have issues with consumption, or, you know, if there is a problem with, with meters, we go in and we test the meters. I think there was some attention drawn to a gentleman that had a high consumption. That gentleman, we actually went in and replaced the meter, and put a new meter in place. Last, at the last meeting, he talked about us junking the meter. You know, typically, we take them out of service, and there's a, it's a variety of reasons, but we're required to maintain a certain level of confidence, and when we do the testing, we keep track of what the test shows versus what the reads occurred. So that's still happening as well. The video from last night is on the website, so if you want to take a look at it, you can. We had some issues with some of the general questions, because some of the people didn't use the mic, so some of that didn't get picked up, so we just had the educational component on the website for you to take a look at. And I think the other thing to remember when looking at this is, and you're probably aware of this, we have about 25,000 utility accounts set up in the city. And I think as the city manager noted, we had about 34 attendees. I think there's been some comments about the timing of the meeting. We were responding to specific requests to sit down and talk to us, which kind of turned into a larger meeting, so. I think overall, if, coming in from the outside and taking a look at it, could we have done a better job in communicating this whole process with the public? No doubt about it. We continue to look at the information we provide on our website. We continue to look at how we communicate with the residents, and we're looking at ways of improving that all the time, and we'll continue to strive to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Robbie, do you have anything you want to add from the Public Works side of the meeting?
No, I, I think it was, you know, as Mr. Roloff said, fairly well attended, you know, as Mr. Von Gampel said, you know, it was a response to an initial request. I had staff there to try and help describe the process and help describe some of the issues that can occur inside a house with plumbing fixtures. You know, even a small faucet drip can waste hundreds or thousands of gallons of water in a month. You know, so it is very eye-opening to think about. You know, one of the things, as we've continued to do research and some of the additional information we're putting out there, we've got some additional links that we posted to the EPA's WaterSense website. You know, on that information, you know, this idea of water issues is not a local, it's not a state, it's a federal issue. You know, the EPA has identified, on average, one in 10 homes in this country has a water leakage issue. You know, one in 10. We've got 10 people up here tonight, one of you on average has got a leaky fixture in your home. You know, that's, that's something to keep in mind. You know, it is a very common issue in homes to have, especially, you know, even if your home is only 20 years old, it is a very common issue. Your toilets don't last forever, your faucets don't last forever, even relatively new homes like that, you know, you need to pay attention to those things. And some of the steps that we're continuing to take, as city manager pointed out, you know, we are proceeding with an analytics software that will, you know, given certain parameters, will monitor for usage spikes in meters. You know, we do not have the staffing to monitor 25,000 accounts on a daily basis to see if there's any spikes or not. The software will monitor given certain parameters, and the first step of that is to notify staff when there's an issue. City manager mentioned a next step that we'll be bringing forward to council is, you know, something that can notify residents immediately without coming to staff first. There are some communities in the area that utilize that, and, you know, as you mentioned, you know, they've, they've seen some good feedback, so we're continuing to investigate those as well. So we are continuing to look for additional ways to, to provide that level of information.
All right, thank you. Mr. Peschel?
Sure. I have one question, so thank you. So I, I feel like I was one of those landlords that Mr. Roloff was alluding to, that was asking for the monthly billing, because I was. I find that to be a very useful thing for the households that I help provide housing to, so, and budgeting and managing their resources. So thank you for that transition. I know that they, they welcome that.
Thank the staff, because they're the ones who have done the, the blood, sweat and tears to the process, and I think Russ is, that was one of the first things Russ heard in his first few weeks, that it's been a little stressful for them, and so I appreciate all the work that they've done.
So my, my question comes from experience with the, with the water department and with residents also communicating the same experience prior to the, the transition to monthly billing. And I've, I've tried asking this question, and I haven't really been satisfied with the response. So the question that I have is that prior to monthly billing, it wouldn't be unheard of for myself or a community member to get a letter from the water department saying, "Hey, we've observed an increase in your water usage. Please check for, you know, a leak or, or something along those lines." And, and Mr. Robbie just indicated that we don't have the overhead to help, you know, manage that anymore, to watch the, to watch that spikeage in any way. My question is, what's different now than before?
The biggest thing that's different is the utility accounting staff, as they were checking the reads and preparing to issue those bills on a quarterly basis, that is when they would notice them. It's not that they would be going out and checking accounts to, to randomly look for spikes in usage. It was when they were working to prepare the bill to send it out, if they noticed that, you know, in the reads as they were downloading them and preparing the bill, that's when they would reach out. So it wasn't, you know, the step that we're looking to take with the analytics software will notify us automatically. We were catching, the accounting staff were catching it as they were preparing to issue the bill. That's what was happening.
There's a finance issue too, that I think Russ, because Ken talked about that a little bit yesterday.
Yeah, if I may, you know, when, when we're doing quarterly bills, you know, after the reader, reads are accumulated, we didn't turn around and get the bills out within a week. It basically was about a month or so process to do all the processing and get the bills out. With monthly billing, we're doing three cycles within, within a month, and so as soon as we get the reads in, they're basically going out the door, and the, the timing is, is good for the customer in that they're getting more immediate response on issues. The bad news is, it doesn't give us time to kind of do that step that we did before, which is go out and double-check the reads, you know, before the bills get sent out.
Yeah, the way Ken was explaining it was that by the time we would normally notice, notice people under the quarterly, they were getting the bill that was confirming the issue, so the bill was kind of the, the monthly bill has now become the warning. That's why what, that's why we have, that's why we've stopped doing that, because the bill effectively does it. But with the new software, especially the one with the app, if, if there's a usage, they'll get it real time, we'll, they'll find out simultaneous with us.
Yeah, and the other thing to remember is, this just is not a notification software. It also is a software that allows you to manage. It also is a software that allows you to manage your account 24/7. So you can take a look at the account usage yourself, kind of make your own decisions as far as how you want to deal with the use of water. We all know that water consumption is not only expensive to the customer, but it's expensive for us to prepare and put in the distribution system. And it's also costly to treat after it gets consumed and goes back into the wastewater treatment process. So, you know, there's a lot of costs associated with this all the way around, not, you know, not just the consumer, but also for the city as a utility. So it's in all of our interests to conserve as best we can, and to monitor our usage and consumption as best we can.
Okay. Councilmember Miller?
Russ, thanks. I'm glad both you guys are up there. Couple of questions. I know a little bit about billing. So we used to do strictly quarterly billing, is that accurate?
Yes.
And do we own our own billing system, or do we third-party that out?
The billing system is a third-party vendor.
Okay. And so we've got software fees, monthly fees, all those things associated with it. So how much, as, and you can spitball this, but I'm assuming that our billing costs have probably tripled or quadrupled because of this?
Yeah. Basically, the main, the main cost is the printing, supplies, and postage, and that's basically tripled.
Okay. And do we, do we allow ACH or credit card payment? Do we allow online, all of those things?
We try to promote that as best we can. We're still trying to promote the ACHs and automatic payments. Can we do a better job? I'm working on that.
Okay. And what percentage are we at right now, would you say? I think it's less than a quarter, isn't it?
I think the last time Ken told me, it was around 20 or a little under, we're doing ACH. But you can also sign up to get your bill emailed to you, which then, that bill doesn't get printed and mailed as well. It just gets a PDF emailed to you.
And in my business, it's about $3.65 to generate that invoice, that paper invoice. Is that similar for us?
We were working on the numbers.
And if you don't have it, don't feel obligated to...
Yeah. It's, I think ours is a little bit less than that. But I don't have, you know, I think we're looking at about a dollar or so. And then I base that based on the cost of the postage and supplies and mailing being around 50 cents. And there might be some more labor costs that I don't have calculated in that, but we can certainly work on that.
No, no, no. It's just a curiosity question. So you're saying our total cost is about a buck a bill, including postage?
Yeah. And, and that might not be all the overhead and labor costs.
Right. So right now, if we've got 25,000 accounts, it's costing us $25,000 a month to invoice our customers. Is that accurate?
About that, yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions, councilmembers? I think staff's staying on top of it.
We're going to keep working on it, and we're, and somebody asked how we're going to notify people, you know, like if we do the software. If we, if we get, when we get the first part of the software, we'll let people know. We'll do social media. Hopefully, the media will cover it for us. And then I think it's going to be a pretty easy discussion about the, the app software. But that is something I'll have to get council approval for.
And then probably come back to council, too, to approve the software, to do the people that can budget bill.
Yeah. And that, and we're going to keep investigating the budget billing. We're, we're intrigued by it. We just have to make sure we dot all our i's and everything.
I think that's a good option, too. So let's just keep the dialogue going and the discussion going, and hopefully, we can make a lot of happy, a lot more happy campers in the community. I just want to thank Chief Smith for being here tonight, and Sergeant.
I want to make sure we're...
Our B team of Deputy Clerk Joe Cal and Mr. Praska, or Deputy City Attorney. Anything else to the council, otherwise, oh...
I just want to make sure we're paying sergeant salaries and not chief salaries tonight for security.
Oh, yeah. Well, we got double security, so that's a good thing. So call out the September 10th. Council meeting adjourned.